Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Chambers. Welcome to the April 22nd meeting of the Lincoln City Council. Thank you all for joining us. I'm going to ask you to join me as I stand to do a pledge of allegiance to the flag, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for joining us. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those in opposition. The applicant may make a short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month, that's next week, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Yes, we ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet lying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three. Is Dan Marvin here?
Good afternoon, members. My name is Dan Marvin. I live at 5918 Rolling Hills Boulevard. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to serve on the Lincoln Electric System Board and would entertain any questions.
Mr. Marvin, thank you for coming forward, and we appreciate your willingness to serve on the board. Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have questions for this Councilman Camp?
Good to see you again, Mr. Marvin. Question for you I used to ask all L.E.S. appointees, and that was, what's your view on nuclear energy?
Oh, I figured you were gonna ask me that one. You know, L.E.S. did have a unit in the 70s that they unwound from, and I think that was probably a good call, given the decommissioning costs for some of those older units. That could have been, or could be, what some people are confronting, a high cost. Newer nuclear power units, maybe they don't have the decommissioning costs that other older units would have, so I'd have to kind of entertain and see where that would lead me.
So you would be open to investigating?
Yeah, I don't have, I'm not philosophically opposed to that form of energy, but there are challenges with decommissioning costs, I think would be one. Obviously, the big one is how you dispose of waste, and then, of course, you have these disasters that have happened in Chernobyl, or in Japan, or in the United States, and those, while they may be rare, something that's rare that has a humongous impact is something that still may be worth trying to avoid altogether, too.
Do you like the idea of the clean energy, though, that they do produce?
You know, I think that, and fair disclosure here, my daughter's an energy analyst for a brokerage firm, and, you know, all the new alternative energy that's come on has had a remarkable displacing effect on all kinds of generating capacity, and the way energy is fed in is a lot more irregular. We used to think in terms of baseload power, satisfying about 60% of your energy demands, and then you'd need natural gas or other types of peaking sources to cover the balance, and the introduction of wind energy has had a tremendous impact on baseload power, because you can have wind turbines turning in the middle of the night, 24/7, and that can become your new baseload, even though it's somewhat irregular. It can be a baseload energy that is displacing a lot of what we would consider to be older baseload energy, which would be your typical coal-powered plants, and so that's, it's a completely different world, I think, than what we would have thought of 30 or 40 years ago.
What about the future, future of federal subsidies on, like, wind energy? That's helped that substantially.
It probably has, but I think costs have come down. I mean, my first calculator I bought was a Texas instrument, probably paid $100 for that, and they're a lot cheaper. Computers, all sorts of things are, have come down in price dramatically, and they're working on these ways of collecting energy through solar power on very thin film that could be, you know, revolutionary as well, so it's hard to predict the future. Let's put it that way.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Camp. Other questions for this appointee? Okay. Marvin, thank you very much again for your willingness to serve. Teresa, what do we have next?
Does anyone else wish to come forward?
And speak on the consent agenda. Thank you. Seeing no one.
If not, we can vote on these items. Item 1A was introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Eskridge, second by Councilman Camp. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Items 1B and 2A and B were introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. Item 4A was the manager application for Sam's Club 6413 at 4,900 North 27th Street. As I mentioned earlier, we do have a request of the applicant to withdraw their application.
Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to speak on this public hearing agenda item? Okay.
All right. We'll go on to item 4B, application of Lincoln Children's Zoo for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 1,500 feet by 1,000 feet at 1222 South 27th Street on May 9th from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
This the time?
Yes, this is the time.
Hi, my name is John Chapo, J.O.H.N. Chapo, C.H.A.P.O. I'm the president and CEO of the Lincoln Children's Zoo. I live at 2340 Stockwell Street here in Lincoln.
Hello, Mr. Chapo. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Requesting, we're doing a little celebrating for wonderful support from our wonderful community. Our successful Love Your Zoo Capital Campaign has been unprecedented by the support that we received in our community. We are humbled by their support, and we're having a small reception on May the 9th in acknowledging our significant donors and funders and thanking them for generosity, as I said, historic and unprecedented, and it's just a late afternoon, early reception. Would like to be able to serve hors d'oeuvres and a little beer and wine with it, if that's on, and say thank you to our wonderful donors, and hence the reason for our request.
Gay, Councilman Camp?
Yes. With your new, welcome, Mr. Zoo Man. We appreciate all you've done. You've worked hard on this, and it's taking good shape. My question is, with the recent change on your license, you get the 12 designated permits. Is this going to be one of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Other questions from the council? Councilman Eskridge?
I have to ask this. Are you serving tallboys and growlers?
Very clever. We are serving lettuce cups by the giraffes, and I think meatballs by the tigers, but I like that. Growlers, and what was the other one?
Tallboys.
Tallboys, I like that. Yeah, I got.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I got growler, tallboys. Can we use that one?
Yeah.
Copyright Eskridge.
Steal the good stuff.
I've got to ask one other question. I was over in Thailand recently, and they had a tiger park, and you could go in there for a high price. You could go in and pet the tigers and all. Or you ever contemplate something like that?
At our children's zoo, you pet the tigers, you'll pet them once.
That's true. They had an age limit, and they wouldn't let me in because I have a limp.
But you can sit with the tigers in the tiger Jeep.
Ah.
We have a very uniquely designed tiger Jeep, with half for the kids and half for the tigers, and there's about two and a half inches of glass in between for laminated paint, so it's gonna be quite, it's gonna be the photo opportunity, we think, for the children's zoo. That's gonna be great. It's one of the many wonderful.
You can keep the tiger in the seat.
Yeah, exactly.
It's gonna be a perfect joke in some ways, right?
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions from the council?
Thank you.
Mr. Chapo, thank you for coming forward. We look forward to celebrating with you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to speak on this agenda item?
Mr. Chair, I would move withdrawal of item 4A.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilwoman Lamb, to withdraw 4A. Discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of item 4B.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilwoman Lamb, for approval of item 4B. Discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll. Would you?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next, then, are public hearing resolutions. Item 5A, approving the transfer of funds from contingency to pay for unanticipated storm debris removal and election expenses.
See Ms. Wolf coming forward to help me understand.
Good afternoon. Sherry Wolf Durble with the City Budget Office. Essentially, we've had a couple of unanticipated expenditures that we would like to ask the council to be able to use contingency funds for. And if you have any questions about the details, again, this was for the term limits ballot issue and for the totally unanticipated October snowstorm where the Parks Department incurred some unanticipated bills for holding the public sites for property owners to be able to bring their tree limbs to.
Questions from the council? Councilman Camp?
Thank you for coming forward.
It's gonna turn this way today.
On the Parks system, does it, is this a contingency fund within parks, or is this a city overall contingency fund?
Lynn's here, and he'll correct me if I'm mistaken, but essentially what they did was accumulate those costs for debris removal in a special Parks Gift Trust Business Unit. Is that correct, Lynn?
Yeah, that's exactly what happened. This is a rare instance. I can remember this happening a few times in the past two decades. We've had a couple of very large storm events, and when they happen citywide, we open up places, parking lots essentially, where the public can come in and dispose of brush. When we do that, then we issued a contract, or we awarded a contract for tub grinding of that debris and then hauling it away. And as Sherry said, we've paid that expense out of a gift trust account. There isn't any cash behind that at this point, and so we're requesting contingency funds to essentially cover that deficit spending that we did.
Okay, so it's out of the general fund contingency, and I think you know here there's 56,000 left in that, and this would take 22/8 of that amount. Does that sound right?
Those are the amounts that we're requesting in the resolution is a total of 56,000. I believe it's 33,000 for the election expense. There's approximately $1.1 million in the contingency fund right now.
Now, didn't we separately, in our budget, appropriate money for the general elections?
We do have $265,000 budgeted for election expense, but that, at that time that we put the budget together, we were only anticipating election expenses for the mayor and the council races and the stormwater bond issue. So we'll be having some future additional election expense incurred this year for the sales tax bond issue, as well as the charter amendments that we didn't see when we put the budget together. So our election expense budget will be running a little short this year.
Thank you.
Think, other questions from the council? Thank you. Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to speak on this resolu, this public hearing item? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move to the next agenda item.
All right, next is 5B, approving an interlocal agreement between the city and LPS for high school golf teams' use of Lincoln City golf courses.
Good afternoon. Lynn Johnson, Switfield Park Recreation. We have had essentially an informal agreement with Lincoln Public Schools for a high school golf team's use of the city golf courses, and we're formalizing that agreement at this point. The prior agreement provided essentially a $10,000 payment for the six high schools to use the golf courses. The girls use the golf courses in the fall, and the boys use the golf courses in the spring. This new agreement breaks it out by high school, and so, and by season. So for what we're now calling a high school golf membership, each one of the high schools would pay $2,000 per season, or a total of $4,000 per year for their golf teams to use the city golf courses. So it's a total of $24,000. So we're going up from $10,000 a year to $24,000, and I would tell you that these fees have not been looked at or adjusted or addressed in many years. The, a couple of other things that we're doing, again, there's an informal agreement that the high school golf teams are allowed to use the driving ranges at each one of the 18-hole golf courses, the four 18-hole golf courses, and today they pay $500 for that, they pay $100 per season for that use. That fee has not been adjusted for a number of years. That revenue goes to the golf pro who is operating that golf course. They've requested that that fee be increased to $750, and so the overall expense will be going from $4,000 a year to $6,000 a year. And the other thing that is new in this agreement is when there are visiting teams who are, who do not have a golf membership with the Lincoln City Golf Program, those visiting players will pay 50% of the junior rate for their play, and we're anticipating that that's gonna generate about another perhaps $8,000 a year that will go to support the golf program. The structure of this agreement is that we're proposing that this be a three-year agreement, and then the intent is to address this biennially thereafterwards. So this agreement gets us through the end of the 1820 biennium, and will cover the 2022 biennium, and then the intent is to revisit, look at what the expenses are. Kind of the philosophy that was used in developing this agreement, we think there's a benefit in high school students learning to play golf, hoping that helps develop their interest in golf as a lifelong sport. And so these fees are based on about 50% of the junior rate, so the city is covering about 50% of the cost of that use, and LPS is covering about 50% of the cost of that use. And the, our Lincoln Municipal Golf Advisory Committee has reviewed the provisions with this in this agreement, and they've recommended approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Camp?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, you know that Mr. Eskridge and I are retiring from this body, and Mr. Eskridge is a good golfer, and he's promised to teach me, and he said we need to do both the AGR course to get me started, and then also the other courses. So when will we not be able to golf? Because we plan to be out there a lot.
These uses typically happen late afternoon, late afternoon and a little bit of early evening. The match play typically happens kind of midday. Twilight golf is a great time to play golf, so anytime after about 6 o'clock, you can get in about nine holes. We have a reduced rate that time of day. I would agree with Mr. Eskridge. Start at the AGR course and then work your way onto the other courses.
What is the, if you had been able to rent this out to regular players at the regular rates, what type of revenue difference is there?
It's about, this is about 50% of what that cost would be. We track the number of uses that the high school golfers, the number of, the number of uses, and whether they're nine-hole or 18-hole uses, and this projected rate is about 50% of what they would, of what this would cost. So if you total this up, the $24,000 is probably worth about $48,000 if they paid the full greens fee. The $8,000 that we're projecting from the non-high school golf team players who are coming for match play or competition play on the courses, that would probably be about $16,000. So, so this concept of trying to build golfers, the city or the golf program, then probably has an investment of about $32,000.
And then, again, the driving range fees go to the golf pro?
Yeah, the driving range fee does go, excuse me, does go to the golf pro.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Eskridge needs to respond. He always has good golf questions.
Yeah. So, so as Councilman Camp indicated, golf takes a lot of practice, so, so does this cover also the practice rounds that the high school students would be playing in addition to the matches?
It does, yeah. This covers their, their, their practice time as well as their match plays. So this is essentially, each one of the high schools will have a membership for both their girls' team and their boys' team, and it does cover both the practice play and the match play.
Other questions from the council? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thanks very much.
Is there anyone else in the council chamber that would like to speak on the golf agenda item? This seems about par for the course. No one's, okay, I'll stop.
Do I have to abstain if my son's on the Lincoln High Golf Team? That's the question.
So you're gonna just have to pay full price.
Okay.
All right, that's enough, so we'll move on. Next agenda item.
I'll call item 5C, Comp Plan Conformance 19006, approving an amendment to the Lincoln Center redevelopment plan to add 9th and O redevelopment project for the construction of a six-story hotel with associated parking on property generally located at 9th and O Streets.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Director, the applicant in this case. This is for plan conformance, not the redevelopment agreement, but I will assure you, it falls quickly on the heels in the event you give us permission to bring you that idea. It will be part of what I think is next week's council meeting of the, you know, of the decade, backing these things up. This is the project area. The building itself will be here, and these are public spaces surrounding it. It was reviewed by planning staff with a number of references to the comp plan, in which they find a commercial use, hotel, entertainment, residential being consistent. The number of connections were quite significant. The actual project itself is the construction of a six-story hotel, 139 rooms. It is in B4 area, which means that the developer is not obligated to provide parking, but in this fact, in this case, they will be, which will be helpful because it provides their own destiny on that score. The planning commission saw this work and approved it 7-0. The urban design committee saw it and gave a number of recommendations, which in my report from that meeting said that the developer, in fact, had taken those and had, in fact, changed the design to match the advice and suggestions that the urban design committee gave, and it did give a recommended approval conditional on changes. This is a night view of the building that we're looking at. The location is at 9th and O. The first floor is going to have certainly lobby space, but there's the prospect of some activity in one kind or another, perhaps a bar, perhaps a restaurant in this very visible area. There is a tension to the 9th Street side of the building. This is it during the day, and if you wanted to see the 9th Street side, which has a significant grade that has to be accounted for, that is being part of the design. Project will cost about $31 million. $28 million will be private. $3 million, it will be TIF in the event you were to see approval in this case. If you ask yourself what goes on in the downtown, you'd say, "commercial opportunity," and hotels, and entertainment, and anything that adds to the 24/7 feel that you want in a downtown. This conforms with the comprehensive plan in our estimation. We hope the council sees it the same way. What questions can I answer for you?
Questions in the council? Councilman, go this way. Councilman Camp?
Go ahead, Mr. Eskridge.
Okay, I just, Mr. Landis, I was gonna ask about the terminal building. It looks like this structure doesn't quite get up to the height of the terminal building, but it mostly covers that space.
It does, and it makes an attempt at the street level to mask the fact that there's some space between the two. This developer is doing its best to take what would be otherwise a very unsightly interstice between the two buildings and covering it up, and that's one of the things that we're glad to have happen here.
Great, thank you.
Now, Councilman Camp?
Thank you, Mr. Landis. The $3 million of TIF, is there any addressing of the interest rate ceiling that could be charged for the TIF? Because I notice it may be sold to the private, the project itself.
Remember that we will be bringing you a redevelopment agreement. We haven't been, if there is a provision, I can't recite it for you, although if, I'll ask and see if there is a provision on that score.
What interest rate did you assume to come up to back into the $3 million? So that there, because of the TIF itself, the increment has to support?
Councilman, I'm not prepared to talk about the redevelopment agreement at this stage. I probably should be able to, but I'm not. However, I will do my very best to give you a timely response to an emailed question. I've got the one about interest rates, and if I understand the question that you're asking, and that is what? What's the ma, do we recite a maximum interest rate for whatever their commercial lender might charge them?
Right, whoever the lender is, yes. We had some situations where there were.
Well, the developer is here. They may want to participate in that conversation. It may not be timely. It may be something, well, we'll see what their reaction is, well, but I'll do my best to find you an answer.
It is good to see this project come back in a good form. Now, in that space that Mr. Eskridge addressed, between the terminal building and the new project, is that enough to allow the terminal building to keep windows on a couple of those floors, or will those have to be closed in with air rights?
We, Building and Safety watched the whole thing, and so it meets standards. There, the terminal building is about a 10-story building. There, the terminal building is about a 10-story building. This is about a six-story building. However, it's six stories with a platform of parking. So there will be some windows high up. I'm guessing that we'll be able to continue to be seen, but I don't recall the impact on, lower on the building. But clearly, it will not be cheek by jowl, but it will be close.
And then my last question, I lost spot here. You talked about 80, on the tax increment, 87,000 or something? What was?
I might have said that the project was $31 million, 28 in private, and 3 in TIF.
I thought I saw something about the city for, for giving a certain amount each year, or maybe, maybe I misread that. Thank you.
Other questions for this testifier? Is there anyone else in the council chamber who'd like to speak on this agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, and Mark Hunziker appearing on behalf of HLI Development LLC, the developer of this project. We were pretty disappointed when the cost project, costs came in so high on the previously approved project, and it turned out not to be feasible to build. It took a little time to revision this, this project, and as Dave described, it's come back as, as one hotel instead of two, and, and no condominiums on top. But it is on the same footprint and has basically the same traffic circulation pattern as the previous project. And it's, it's going to be about 140 rooms with 90 or so parking stalls, which is unique among hotel projects in downtown Lincoln. I think the only hotel downtown that supplied its own parking that's here today is the, is the Graduate, which was done, I think, in the early 70s sometime. And if you've driven in that parking garage, you'd know that it's not maybe the best parking garage in town, but it is a parking garage. The, the good news is that we are, we're coming back to you with a project that, that no longer requires enhanced employment area tax and bond to support it. It has a very attractive facade, and it's, and we've done some very hard and fast work to get to this point. The goal is to get this project under construction in early summer and have it open by early 2020. And I wanted to say thank you to the urban development staff, in particular, the law department staff as well, for, for the assistance and cooperation we've had in getting very quick turnaround on review of both design and legal documentation to get this project to you in a, in a quick manner. We, we were under some pressure from the franchisor to actually get a project underway or not. And so we're going to, we're going to be able to make that, and we're really happy about The question that Councilman Camp asked about interest rates, the redevelopment agreement, which is not yet on your agenda, but will be next week, provides for and assumes a maximum interest rate of 4.75%. I think that pretty well covers everything I was intending to say, although I would offer to, I wish I had this in color, but I don't. Part of what, part of what Mr. Landis was discussing as far as covering the, the west wall of the terminal building, if you can, if you see right here along the eastern edge of this project, there is a wall that extends right up to the west side of the terminal building. There's, in, in reality, there's about a five-foot offset from the west wall of the terminal building to the footings for this building, because some of the footings of the terminal building got extended over the property line, and we really didn't want to get involved in, in messing with those. But we have figured out a way to extend this wall in a way that, that covers that space and eliminates that unsightly wall there, or at least covers it up. And if there are any other questions that you would ask of me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Camp.
I found the number I had here, this was on the tax increment financing analysis page. It was an attachment to this material, and it says the city will forego 15.78% of these collections for approximately 48...
Which page are you on? I'm sorry.
Well, it's, it's on the amendment to the Lincoln Center Plan, Attachment A, so one, two, three, four, five, page five. It says at the top, tax increment financing analysis and kind of a table, and then some text.
This is redevelopment agreement, I'm sorry. I'm in the, I'm on the wrong, wrong document.
And I think maybe that's just referring to what the city would have gotten in taxes otherwise, but I'm, just to clarify.
Oh, the sentence that reads, "The city will forego 15.78% of these collections." Is that, yeah, I think what that is, is a reference to the amount of tax that will be, that will be part of the tax increment provision that sets aside the tax on the incremental increase in value. We expect at least a $15 million increase in the valuation of the site, including the building. And that tax increment provision, as you know, is set aside to pay down the, the bond on the $3 million TIF. The, what, what that refers to is the amount of those collections which would otherwise go to the city if those collections occurred in a normal way. Of course, those, those collections wouldn't occur but for this project. So that's, that is the amount that the city would get if this project were built without tax increment financing, if it could be built without tax increment financing and created that same increment of value. And that's the amount that the city will ultimately get adjusted for valuation increases over the 15-year period of the, of the tax increment provision.
And I think I saw the other, not to protest value of 16,500,000.
That's correct.
So at least be at that level unless the assessor came up with something less.
I'm sorry?
It would be at that level upon completion at the end of the 15 years, essentially, unless the assessor valued it less.
That's, that's the number that we agree will be acceptable as of, at the, at this point at least. I mean, presumably, there will be a day when, when the valuation will be higher than that. And I think that'll, that'll hopefully pay down the bond faster and get the city back on the collection sooner.
And then one thing on the parking, I think, did you say there were 70 off-street parking spots?
I think it's 90 or 91, something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Other questions from the council?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counsel, I'm, I'm mispronouncing his name. You were going to help me with that again?
Hunziker.
Zicker, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hunziker.
I've been called lots of times.
I've been trying to educate people at Hunziker instead of Hunziger.
Are there others in the council chamber that would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one else coming forward?
All right. If not, we'll go on to 5D, approving a resolution to limit spending to no more than $20,000 to provide education on any ballot issue without prior approval of the city council.
Councilman Eskridge, you want to help me with this? Councilman?
Jennifer Patrick, City Attorney. There have been a couple of different amendments that have been floating around that my office prepared at the request of several council people. My understanding is there's been a proposal for different language. I've got some different language drafted. I do not have copies to distribute to all of you. I apologize for that. So I thought if I could put it up on the overhead and kind of walk through the language change with you.
Motion second before we get to this.
There has not been a motion for an amendment. This could be amendment number one.
Got it.
So, the focus does change from putting a $20,000 limit on...
Well, actually, I want to clarify something. Last week, Councilman Eskridge offered a motion to amend, and I didn't see it show up on our online...
It, it wasn't offered.
It wasn't online.
Because we, I withdrew. I think I, that we put it on pending or delayed it, right?
We looked to see if there was an amendment number one, because we thought we might be preparing amendments two and three for today. Our research showed that there had not been amendment number one, so that's why we numbered it in the way we did.
It was distributed to us.
Yeah, it was distributed.
Distributed, but if it wasn't offered, it was not an amendment number one.
Okay. I mean, you're, you're the city attorney, but it seems to me that, that if we have discussion, we need to get this on, you know, somebody needs to introduce a substitute.
Well, you have a resolution. This would be an amendment number one. Yeah, okay.
Okay. And I'm not able to see it, but it looks vaguely familiar. Could you turn over to the next page, just so I'm sure what... Okay. All right. So I would like to move that substitute motion.
This would be, I believe, amendment number one.
I think it's a key pad zoomed down. Push button.
Second. Where was that, your second?
Okay. We now have a motion and a second for a substitute amendment. I'm feeling like we're more legal now.
Just for clarification, you moved this, and is this essentially what you were offering, or is this what Mr. Kirkpatrick is going to explain to us?
It, it was what I was offering, and, and I think he's going to explain it.
I didn't know if it was going to be amendment one and two here. I'm just confused.
Yeah.
I think the intent was to not have amendments one and two, to have something that would, that Councilwoman Lamb and Councilman Eskridge were both agreeable to.
Okay.
Yes.
So the suggestion was made about language. I tried to draft this to reflect the sense of what was indicated to me that they'd agreed on. And so this is the first opportunity that they have had a chance to view the actual proposed language along with you.
And, if I can ask, so this includes, just before this, we talked about a little additional language that would be part of the motion as it's amended?
Right, yes.
Okay. And can you, so this is what we talked about, Carl. Just, could you explain that?
Yes. So the focus would not be to put a limit on how much money that could be spent by the city, but rather to have transparency. And so when the resolution comes before the council, there would also be an explanation of how much money would be spent on an education campaign, if any. And it would be limited to not the city resources. For example, if, if somebody that was on city staff was out explaining, giving information about a stormwater bond, that would be part of their regular duties. This would be if money was spent for an outside vendor. And so the language that has been prepared says, there's a ballot language provided to the council. This, the mayor shall, upon submission to the council of a resolution calling for an election that includes one or more ballot issues, provide to the council the amount of funding that will be expended through a private vendor for education campaign purposes for each ballot issue. The city funds to be spent for education campaign purposes by a private vendor shall be clearly stated on the cover sheet or other similar documentation accompanying the resolution. So that was my attempt to reduce to writing what you had suggested. We can make changes.
And I'm sorry, I think that we, what we had talked about actually was adding, just that it would disclose, it would be how much and whether it included a private vendor. So it would be how much was spent, in any case, was intended to be spent or expended, and then also to identify if there was going to be a private vendor.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm sorry if I didn't communicate that.
No, no, I, I think I understand that. The difficult part would be to quantify how much time city staff would spend on public education responding to questions. I, I don't know how you would quantify that, frankly. So you, for example, with the, the sales tax issue, I know, for example, the finance department took a number of different phone calls. I know that transportation utilities took a number of different phone calls. I mean, how would you quantify Ms. Esposito's time, for example, where she was going on the radio or going out to meetings, going to the chamber and talking about that? That's why I focused entirely on the private vendor, because that is what you could quantify. And I think that was your concern about, how do we know how much money should be spent? We should have that in advance.
Okay. Does that sound okay to you, Carl?
Councilwoman Gaylor-Baird, I'm a little...
Well, this just raises a new question, I guess, because depending on the amount that, that might have to be bid, correct? And therefore would not be known necessarily in advance.
Well, you were, you could...
The anticipated budget. I mean, I thought that was the idea.
Well, if you had a budget amount, you would essentially set a ceiling, and if you took two bids from competing companies, one could come in lower than the other, in which case the taxpayers would save money.
But if they see the budget ahead of time, then, I don't know how competitive the bidding process becomes.
Well, but if it was, you had one company, Roy had another one, and the budget was for, say, $100,000, and you both bid $100,000, then it would base, basically be on the quality. But if Roy bid $90,000, then he might well get the bid.
But what if you really only want to spend like 75, but you weren't sure you could get it there? I mean, I, I guess, I'm wondering if we need another week on this.
At that point, it becomes a guessing game, and you've got to put your best bid forward if you want it. That's, this is the way it works.
So, I just, I just want to say that I'm, I'm very pleased with what Councilman Eskridge brought forward, because I think this actually goes to protect the public even more than I was suggesting, because it says, hey, if there's going to be taxpayer money expended on some type of a educational program surrounding a ballot issue, that it will be upfront and out there for the council and the public right from dollar one, if it's going to include an outside vendor. And I think that's really what, what the public was concerned about. It wasn't, although the amount was certainly of concern to them, it was more the surprise of not actually understanding that there was going to be amount spent. And so this, in conjunction with also making sure that the, any expenditures that are made, that any advertising or whatever educational materials are clearly designate that is paid for by, by the city protects the taxpayers, because there was some confusion when some private companies also started a campaign regarding the taxpayer. And I saw a number of taxpayers were concerned that that was their money as well. So, yeah, so I support the substitute, the amendment in form of a substitute resolution.
Other questions from the council? Councilman?
I'm a little confused. At one point, Mr. Kirkpatrick, I thought you were talking about outside vendors. There's nothing in here about the, but is the, is the intention to quantify and then have these disclaimers on monies paid to other than city staff or something?
The intent from the amendment that was made is to substitute what you have in front of you with this language, which does talk about expended through a private vendor for education campaign purposes. So this is new language that you see on the screen that you do not have in front of you because of the, the time at which the discussion was had.
And that would be substituted on page two of what we have in front of us here.
If the amendment is adopted.
I'm going to go to Councilman Eskridge while we move.
Okay, thanks. And, and I appreciate working with, with Cindy on this and, and with City Law, too, on it. With the new language and the fact, and I apologize for the fact that this has come up on the dais essentially, which we don't like to do, I would move that we, we delay this for a week. I think it's, would be probably best for us to, to make sure we've got the language exactly the way we want it and, and then vote on it next week.
That's a motion then, to delay?
You want public hearing continued or just action?
Yes.
So a motion by Councilman Eskridge and second by Councilwoman Gaylor-Baird to delay one week with continued public hearing.
Continue public hearing and action.
So what everybody heard? So a motion and second? I'm ready for the clerk to call the roll on that.
Who seconded?
A Councilwoman Gaylor-Baird.
Thank you. Okay, this is on the motion to delay. Gaylor-Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Just for me to be clear, we had a motion to substitute, which we never really voted on. Don't have to worry about that?
No.
Okay.
We'll take it up next week.
All right.
But we still need public hearing today since it was...
Yes, thank you. Is anyone? Thank you very much. Is anyone in the council chambers that would like to speak on this agenda item today? Seeing no one coming forward? Thank you very much. Thank you, John, for your help on that.
All right.
We're ready for...
Now we can vote on these items.
Yes.
Is the transfer of funds introduced... Is the transfer of funds introduced by Eskridge.
The move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Eskridge, a second by Councilwoman Christensen. Discussion? Councilwoman Gaylor, um, Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. So, I just had one question to clarify, and I think it's Sherri's, yeah. Excuse me. Because initially, when we were talking about the election expenses, it was mentioned that it was election expenses related to the term limits on last November's ballot. And then, it was referred to as election expenses on the quarter cent sales tax. Were those two combined? Is that what these additional expenses are?
All of the election expenses are paid out of our general expense, general fund budget. What we were talking about earlier was that when we put the budget together, the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that we have budgeted to spend this year was projected to cover the mayor and the council races and the bond issue. So, we did not foresee or budget enough money to cover the thirty-three thousand dollar bill that we're receiving for the term limits issue. So, we're now asking to be able to use contingency funds to cover that unanticipated expense.
Okay, so is this all the term limits issue that incurred that cost?
Yes, that was thirty-three thousand dollars just for the term limits ballot question.
Okay, and then would we expect then another request related to the sales tax issue this time around?
That will depend on the new administration and whether they want to come to the council. I do anticipate that there will be a budget overrun.
Okay, but it's not included in this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think Councilman Eskridge, you had the same question?
She answered it.
Councilman Camp, do you have a question?
I had half of that question, but the other half is, I understood when you presented this to us that there was the two hundred and sixty-five, but it went over by this fifty-six thousand currently.
The fifty-six thousand represents the combination of the storm, the tree debris removal, and a thirty-three thousand dollar election expense. So, the fifty, the twenty-three thousand or whatever is for the storm cleanup.
So, where'd the other two hundred and sixty-five thousand go?
I still have that budget, but I will need to pay the election commission after the general election, when we receive the bills for the mayor and the council races, as well as the sales tax and the charter amendment ballot issues.
So, you budgeted two hundred and sixty-five thousand, then we had some extra stuff come up. You'd like this to authorize you to have the money to pay those bills when they arrive?
Yes.
Why don't we wait, since you still have the two hundred and sixty-five, why not just pay this, or authorization, pay this out of that rather than the contingency fund? And then, see where the bills come from the election commissioner for these other, the mayor, city council races, and you said the sales tax bond and the stormwater bond.
I think as these bills come in and we incur the costs, we just like to know where the money's coming from to pay them. I'm not saying that it couldn't be done that way, but I think when Lynn had a need and we knew we had this overrun as well, we just combined the two questions to come forward with one contingency request at this time.
But that's assuming the two sixty-five would not cover the other things, and you don't know that.
I don't have any doubt that we're gonna more than expend the two hundred and sixty-five thousand based on, you know, our fifteen, seventeen election expenses. I did talk to the election commissioner today just to see if I could get an estimate. But he assured me as well that the way they budget, or the way the state law requires them to allocate the election expense, that is done by inches of ballot space. And because the city is taking up the vast majority of the ballot space in both the primary and the general elections this year, we're gonna foot the majority of the bill. And estimating will be over maybe a hundred and fifty thousand.
But it's still a hundred and fifteen thousand less than the two sixty-five you have.
No, that's on top of the two sixty-five that I have. A hundred and eighty thousand if you include this thirty-three thousand dollars that we've already been billed for the term limits.
Again, I guess I just question why, why don't we, we know the numbers, but why don't we wait till you get the bills? Because you got two hundred and sixty-five thousand there to pay bills, and then when you see the total deficit, then move it at that time.
This was a totally unanticipated expense was my only logic, and I just felt that we should get approval to pay that bill. I need to pay that one now.
Well, you've got two hundred and sixty-five thousand to pay it.
I do.
And we, I mean, we can give you approval to do it out of the, your campaign fund. I mean, but I just think it's a, it's a timing sequence. I'd rather see, let's wait till we know the total amount, then decide how much needs to get them out of the city's contingency fund.
It's a valid point. Like I said, I prefer to keep up and just have the authorization and the budget now, but I, it's a valid point. I understand.
Protect that contingency fund, so, okay.
Following up on that just a little bit, so what if, if we transfer out of contingency fund and you spend less? Is there a transfer back, or is it just get redistributed with the next budget?
It would remain in the election expense fund. Again, it just, I'm quite certain that there's gonna be an overrun. It hadn't occurred to me that there would be any savings that would be left there if we chose not to cover this expense with contingency funds.
Thank you. Other questions from the council?
I heard Easter Bunny left us a lot of money yesterday.
Councilwoman Lamb, I think your hands up. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure election expense, then, none of the funds for the quarter cent sales tax education campaign came out of the election fund?
That will be on my next bill. When we get the bills for the primary and the general election, we will receive the expense from the sales tax ballot issue as well.
And will that include, though, I'm talking about the education campaign?
No, that has already been taken care of.
Councilman Eskridge?
No, I was clarifying that.
Okay. And I would like to remind everybody, we are in a voting session now. So, we had some additional discussion of the motion. Is there any other discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one. Item five B is the interlocal with LPS for use of the Lincoln City golf courses introduced by Eskridge.
The move.
Second.
Have a motion by Eskridge, second by Camp. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Five C, Comp Plan Conformance one nine zero zero six, Ninth and O redevelopment project introduced by Eskridge.
The move.
Second.
Motion by Eskridge, second by Christensen. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item five D has been continued until next week. Public hearing ordinances, second reading. Item six A, text amendment one nine zero zero two, application of the Country Club to amend section twenty-seven point sixty-three point one thirty subsection F of the Lincoln Civil Code to remove the reference to temporary structures and repealing section twenty-seven point sixty-three point one thirty subsection F as hitherto existing.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom McHidric, and I am GM and CEO of the Country Club of Lincoln. My address is ninety-three twenty-three Del Rio Drive here in Lincoln. The club address is thirty-two hundred South Twenty-Fourth Street. Also, here with me today is Blake Johnson, who's a member of our club, and he has helped us navigate this application process for the text amendment, which I don't do very often. I appreciate you allowing us to be here before you and to speak in favor of text amendment nine, one nine zero zero two. You already have a wealth of information that the planning commission has, has provided you with. I know your time's valuable, so I'll make this as concise as I can. In short, the club would like to update our driving range netting for safety and for our golf members and guests and staff. The new netting would protect golfers on two holes. It would protect our staff working in the golf course maintenance building and golf cart storage area. The higher netting would also protect a proposed twenty-five space employee parking at the far end of the range. The current poles are twenty-five feet high. What we'd like to install are fifty feet high. Golf technology has changed vastly in, in recent years. And, and for, for some golfers, who can hit it longer and farther, this is a much needed, much needed item.
You don't have to worry about me.
Nor me. I'm more of an army golf.
Um, let's see. It would also help us lessen the number of vehicles parked outside the gate when we have big events, which I, I see some of you at, like the chamber luncheons. You see people parked all the way to Van Dorn. As you're aware, the driving range is at the center of our property, so we really don't think it's gonna bother anybody. They're barely gonna see it, especially during the growing season. So, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hidric. Questions from the council? Looks like you did a great job.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to testify on this agenda item? Coming forward, let's go to six B.
That would be change of zone, actually, we'll call six B M.C., change of zone one nine zero zero eight, application of Dial Salt Creek LP for a change from H three highway commercial to B two planned neighborhood and A.G. agricultural on property generally located at North Twenty-seventh and Husker Circle and use permit one nine zero zero three to allow a residential healthcare facility for up to seven hundred sixty-two persons and/or up to two hundred seventy thousand square feet of commercial floor area with a waiver to building height at North Twenty-seventh and Husker Circle.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and council members. I am here on behalf of Salt Creek Dial Salt Creek LP. I do have here in the audience with me Janine DeVetter, that is available to answer any questions from the ownership side and maybe possible management side of this project. You have two applications in front of you. One is for the change of zone from the H three highway commercial to B two planned neighborhood business and agricultural districts. This is, and then the second application for an associated B two use permit to go along with that. With the use permit, there is a height waiver that is included to increase the height from forty to fifty-five feet. That is consistent with the adjacent H three zoning to this, to this property. Both of these applications were on consent, were approved six-zero by the commission. The project with Dial Companies has been, this is something that they have done with retirement communities. As you know, that the, the very similar type of Knowles project was the same type of ownership there. With that one, the height waiver is being asked for. It'd be very similar in nature, where it'd be three to, I should say, two to three stories, where I may differ to the different types of areas of the building. The, the use with being assisted independent and memory care facilities will include all of them. They will be a licensed assisted living center. The change of zone, which is a little unique here, adjacent to an H three zone, we believe that this is an appropriate type of area. One, you may ask why the unique type of area, is that a market study has shown that Northwest Lincoln, North Lincoln is in need of this type of facility. And then, in addition to that, this type of facility would be more assisted type living occupants here. It does not need to be located adjacent to residential type of other zones for walkability. And therefore, that's why we believe that this is a good area for the rezoning. This project, in addition to, I might put up a use permit here, or the, the change of zone area.
Three, two, one. While we're waiting, I'm just a little stickler. You did not introduce yourself into the record?
Oh, I'm Brad Marshall.
You were very polite to me.
Sorry, very. Brad Marshall with Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Thank you.
So, the property currently zoned H three, B proposes a change of zone to B two. The use permit is lay, has, does show a layout for the facility on the south side of the property. It is oriented, working with planning staff and so forth, oriented towards the wetlands to have more views for people that are staying there, to have more natural views to those wetlands. The project was previously permitted with the Corps of Engineers. I don't want to gloss over that because there are several different conditions associated with that permit. This, this project would carry on those conditions. Two big ones that were in here were both stormwater and lighting. And that is to protect the Salt Creek Tiger Beetle that is obviously adjacent there in Little Salt Creek. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. I think Councilman Camp has some questions for you.
Nice to see you, Mr. Marshall. Question, when you say the residential healthcare facility, out of curiosity, is there a breakdown of what levels of residential living or assisted living or?
I don't know that we know that at this time. I may defer to Janine here on that side.
Obviously, it's a burgeoning area as we live long.
Yes, my name is Janine DeVetter, and I represent Dial Salt Creek. And my, do I need to see my address? One seven zero zero two Kimberly Circle, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you.
You might spell your name for our.
J.E.A.N.N.I.N.E. And DeVetter is D E, capital V as in Victor, E.T.T.E.R. Um, yeah, so, we don't have exactly the unit structure we're gonna build, but like in the Knowles, for example, we built eighty units of assisted, twenty of those were memory care. And then, we're going to build fifty-six of independent living. And we, but we're gonna license the whole thing as assisted. So, if, um, because the, the people that move in, um, a lot of them have, I mean, even if they move into independent living, they're not, they're not driving typically. They're not, um, they're not gonna go walk to the grocery store. They have a lot of needs. A lot of them will use in-home healthcare along with independent living. A lot of times, there's a stigma involved with moving into an assisted living, and so, people will move into an independent living so that they feel like they, they have more control over, you know, they have a kitchen, they can cook, and that sort of thing if they wanted to.
But this would enable them to, so to speak, graduate then as their needs might increase.
Yeah, yeah, then they can move. And with it being all licensed assisted living, they could even stay in their specific unit to, they, depending on how the building was laid out and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Councilman Eskridge has some questions.
Yeah, how about in terms of medical care if, if an individual needs, needs that? Is, is that a possibility there or not?
Uh, well, we do, with the assisted living, they can dispense medic, like, they can do certain things. It's all according to what their license is. So, I think with assisted living, you can give medication. But then, in order to do like occupational therapy, that we bring in, there's a lot of in-home healthcare companies that we work with to do occupational therapy, hospice, different things like that to allow them to stay there as their needs progress. But I think the most that we do would be like bathing, helping with the medication, helping with them, getting them food, making sure it's appropriate, that sort of thing.
And if I can, occasionally, with, you know, these kinds of facilities, the, you know, their medical needs and the fire department may need to respond with ambulance care or other care that they provide. And we are building a new fire station at Twenty-seventh and Superior, roughly.
Oh, great, yeah.
And then, also Highlands is pretty close to this location, too. So, I think in the coverage should be well provided there. Okay.
Other questions from the council? I'm gonna thank you both for coming forward and testifying. We appreciate your information.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the council chambers that would like to speak on this agenda item? Hearing no one else coming forward?
All right, we'll go on to six D.
Yes.
Street and alley vacation one nine zero zero four, application of the West Haymarket JPA to vacate the north-south ten-foot wide alley which extends from the north. JPA to vacate the north-south ten-foot wide alley which extends from the north line of N Street on property generally located at six sixty N Street.
Timothy City Lot Department. This is a street and alley vacation that came up through a title search of the property. Essentially, in two thousand and twelve, we went through a series of these vacations where a number of the streets and alleys in the, what is now the West Haymarket, were reviewed and vacated. What you'll see in the crosshatched areas is actually areas that were vacated in two thousand and twelve. This little ten-foot alley in green here was missed at that time. And so when folks were doing title work on acquiring this property, they found it. This is brought to you today as a cleanup. It was taken to the Planning Commission. They approved it, and we would recommend approving, vacating this section of alley. That, right, I guess as a quick orientation, this is the N Street right of way here. This was old Seven, this would be Old Seventh Street right of way. Canopy Street would sit somewhere in this area.
Okay, your map moved a little bit on us, so.
All right about that. This is Sixth Street right of way here. This is the Harris Overpass north. So that's the area we're talking about. Again, a ten-foot, ten-foot wide alley that if you drove past there today, you wouldn't know it exists. It's a, sort of on paper only at this point.
Thank you. Questions for the testifier? Would anyone in the chamber like to speak on this agenda item, this alley vacation? Thank you very much. We'll move on to six E and F.
We'll do six E and F. Change of zone one nine zero zero six, application of Bill Langdon for a change from O three Office Park to B two Planned Neighborhood Business District on property generally located at Highway two and Pine Lake Road, and the appeal of Tim Gergen on behalf of Dory, Inc., of the Planning Commission's approval of use permit one thirty two C to amend use permit one thirty two B to add six commercial lots with an increase of approximately forty seven thousand two hundred square feet of commercial floor area at Highway two and Pine Lake Road.
Good afternoon. Mark Hunzick, you're appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is a parcel that has been zoned, I believe, for office now for about twenty years. It's recently been graded and it's time to develop. It's, the change of zone is to B two, which will permit some office use as well, but it will primarily, at least for the time being, the vision is for, for more of a retail orientation. We think the site is a natural for that, particularly with the new Pine Lake Road, which will be there hopefully soon. We've had some discussions with the staff over conditions of approval. As you know, we have an appeal pending here because we couldn't quite get to an agreement at the Planning Commission on what those ought to look like. We had a meeting on Friday in which we finalized an agreement with the staff, both planning and public works, as to what those conditions should look like. Mr. C has put those into a motion to amend, which I believe he will either, either has or will deliver to you before you vote on this next week. And if you want me to elaborate on what those are, I can do that. But basically, we have agreed that we will, the developer will pay for, in order, we have a requirement that we have an access that leads from our north-south driveway to the property to the west. And the property to the west is considerably lower than our site. I mean, even after, even after a lot of dirt's been taken off of our site, it's probably fifteen feet of elevation change from our driveway to the property line. And so there's going to need to be some considerable grading and fill done on the property to the west in order for that to develop. But the staff has concluded that sometime, maybe not in the near future because the current owners are living on the property and don't intend to move, but at some point, the staff has concluded that it's likely there will be some non-residential use of that site. And so we're, we're providing a public access easement, and we are agreeing to pay for the pavement to go from our property line to our driveway and allow them, and dedicate a public access easement so that they can use our driveway to get out to Pine Lake Road. The fill that was, that's required to, for that to happen, to get from the level that property is up to our driveway is going to be at their expense, but it will be a small portion of the amount of fill, I think, that will be necessary to develop that property. And it will extend at least a couple hundred feet into their property from our property line. So there's a fair amount of work that needs to be done in order for them to get that access, but we are going to provide the easement and we are going to provide the concrete that gets from our driveway to the property line at such time as they change the use and take advantage of the easement. As to the traffic signal, we've agreed that we will pay two thousand, before, before a final plat is approved, we will pay two hundred thousand dollars cash, which represents half the cost of the signal. And if the signal is warranted before the expiration of five years, we will pay the other half. We will put in a, we will post a bond to, to pay for the other half of the signal. If the property on the south side of Pine Lake Road is developed during that period of time, we will not, not be required to pay that second half of the signal. And if it goes beyond five years before a signal is actually warranted, we will not be able, be required to pay the other half of the signal. So if there are any questions about any of that, you will get a copy of that with your packet, I think, going out for, for the next week's meeting. And if you have any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions now from the council? Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I can appreciate that there was a lot of work that went into sort of this compromise, so I don't want to take away from that. But I do want to ask if there's something more unusual about this set of circumstances that would help us have a better understanding of how likely we might be to see something like this become a regular thing, because it's obviously complicated and, you know, divvying things up over long periods of time. Is this the new normal, or is this just a one-off based on extraordinary circumstances?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it a one-off. It's, it's not the first time that someone has been the first developer on, on a, on one side of a major intersection, or major street intersection that, that is likely at some point in the future to require a signal. One that comes to mind, although it was, it happened that the same developer was on both sides, was the intersection at Twenty Seventh Street that, that goes into, I can't recall the name of the street, that runs along the north side of the Walmart on South Twenty Seventh Street. There's a signal there. There was, there was an arrangement at that, at the time, both sides were, were rezoned, that that, that those, that developer was going to pay for that signal because they were on both sides. Had it been different from that, I'm sure the same kind of arrangement would have been made. It's just, it, it's, it's just a matter of when you have, when you have an intersection, and frankly, we may end up paying for the whole thing anyway. I mean, if, if our, if our entire project develops out within the first five years, it's very likely that we will warrant a signal and we'll pay for it. And we'll be happy to do that in those circumstances. On the other hand, if next year, the south side develops as an apartment complex, it seems to us fair that they should contribute to that signal because they're going to be as much, warranting it as much as we will. So that's, it, like I said, I don't think this is a one-off thing, but it's maybe a little bit unusual, but not unique.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Hunzick, thank you very much for coming forward. Anyone else in the chamber like to speak on this agenda item? Do you want to hear from staff on that one?
I'd like to hear from law.
I think you said law, didn't you?
Law, yeah.
Wouldn't want to leave David out of this.
That will trouble. I just wanted to get your perspective, if you could advise us on, on the arrangement as well, and clarify, I guess what happens if, after five years, their development isn't built out, they're no longer responsible for the rest of the signal, if, if it's not warranted. But at some point when it is, would it be a third party that's developing? What, what would?
Well, the, the advantage is you've got two hundred thousand dollars in cash in hand immediately, and then at such time, if it's warranted by this development building out quickly and, and they need to pay for the rest of it, then they are the ones that cause it to be warranted. They pay the remainder of it. If somebody builds to the south, and they are the, they move it over that threshold so that the traffic light is warranted at that point. They, they helped pay for the light, but this, this developer's already paid for the initial half of that. So I think that's all the arrangement is meant to reflect is, it's a little uncertain as to how this is all going to play out. And so recognizing that there's two sides of the street, that, that each of them is responsible for half unless one of them causes all of the need upfront, and then, and then they will pay for the entire amount, which I think, like Mark said, they would love to build out that quickly, I'm sure, and, and, and pay the whole cost if that's the case. David, from a policy standpoint, I think you've had.
Yeah, David Carey with the Planning Department. Just, just for clarity on that point, is that the, really, the arrangement is that it, it puts into consideration the contingency that the south side develops at some point. Basically, the, the possibility is there that it could be commercial. It might be more likely that it's resident, it is more likely that it's residential. If it is going to be apartments, the, that contingency is there for that to participate in the cost of the signal whenever it does become warranted. With both sides developing, it becomes much more likely that it is warranted in the near term, and that's the contingency that's been built in.
So what's the typical situation if this is atypical? What, can you speak to that for us?
So at this moment, I'll, I'll do my best. Lonnie Berklin at this point. I will defer to Mickey Esposito if she wishes to come up and speak to this. So Lonnie, as the Assistant Director of Transportation, was in on all these discussions. He, he did a good job of explaining during those discussions that there have been different ways of handling this. There's the, we have done some of these where we are front, fronting some of the costs of the signals in cash in lieu of an agreement that puts some of that, puts the responsibility in kind of some, in suspension for the developers that it's just waiting until there's a need for that signal. It's been done different ways. Lonnie made it clear that he, he sees pros and cons in both ways. So the cash upfront certainly allows for some flexibility on more near-term needs that can be in this particular area especially. But it also allows for, it also provides a, the situation where we're going to be put into a need to discuss with that south side developer when and if they come in to have a similar conversation about participating in the cost. There really isn't a, a better way of doing it, in my opinion. I think, as long as we're being fair about it, and we're trying to make sure that we're all taking responsibility for the need for a signal there at some point. If there was no development going on, which is not what we want, but if there was no development going on, we wouldn't have the need. So this is a fair way of laying it out and saying that there's costs being shared by, by all parties.
Thank you.
Other questions for planning or legal? Gentlemen, thank you very much for sharing with us. Does anyone else in the council chambers would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one coming forward, let's.
All right. If not, that concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Ordinance's third reading, item seven A is adopting the supplements to the Lincoln Municipal Code dated June twenty eighteen and December twenty eighteen as part of the official Lincoln Municipal Code, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second. Have a motion by Christensen, second by Eskridge. Discussion. Would you call a roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Street and Alley Vacation one nine zero zero one, this is vacating a portion of North Eighty Fourth Street right of way at forty eight fifty one North Eighty Fourth Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Christensen, second by Eskridge. Discussion. Please call a roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
One more time.
Seven C, change of zone one nine zero zero four, for a change from I two Industrial Park to I three Employment Center at forty eight fifty one North Eighty Fourth Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Christensen, second by Eskridge. Discussion. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are items eight A through K. Ordinance's first reading are items nine A through S, as in Sam.
That's a lot of alphabet.
It is. Next week's gonna be fun. Our pending list, item eleven B, as I mentioned earlier, we've had a request of the applicant to withdraw Bill eighteen R seventy two.
So moved.
Second. Can I have some discussion on that?
Yes. A motion by Camp, second by Christensen. Discussion.
And just so everyone knows, it's my intention, before the changeover to the new council, the new mayor, to remove all of the items on the pending list. Item eleven A, David Carey has told me that we'll be given a date certain on that before that happens. So maybe next week, we'll just clear this, everything except for eleven A off of the agenda.
Okay.
And leave it to the new council, the new mayor, to set their agenda.
Any additional discussion to the motion? This is, right now, we're just voting on the motion to remove eleven B.
Eleven B. Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Mr. Gerret. Yes, yes, go please. I have a motion?
Second.
And a second to adjourn. Would you call a roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We are adjourned.